Are you guys ready? Okay, good. Seven o'clock, roll call, please.
Chair Hedges.
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito.
Here.
Commission Members Askey.
Here.
DeLapp.
Jafarian.
Yes.
All present.
We are now going to do the pledge allegiance. Please stand who's in the room, and Danny, can you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Danny. Appeal notice, Alma, please.
This is the appeal notice. In the event that you disagree with the action taken by the Planning Commission in regards to your application, or with any condition for approval of the application which is not a specific requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, you are entitled to appeal such determination or conditions to the City, to the Norco City Council, provided that such appeal is filed within the Norco City Clerk with ten, within ten calendar days after the requirements for appeals, inclusive of payment of an appeal fee.
Thank you, Alma. This is the time we have public comments. Do we have any, Lacy?
I do.
Okay, let me open the, go ahead, read. Thank you.
I have an email from Bonnie Slager. She stated there will be a candidate's night hosted by NHA and Rural on Thursday, September 17th, at Silver Lakes Park. Everyone will be sitting in their car for the event and hear the candidates on their car radio via FM transmitter. Candidates will be on a stage and projected on a screen. Not an ideal situation, but the best we could come up with, given the current situation. The event begins at 7:00 PM, so please get there early. See you there, thanks, Bonnie Slager, President, NHA.
That's it, Lacy? Okay, I'll close the public comments, move to approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 29th.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a motion to second it.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian, and a second from Member DeLapp. Chair Hedges.
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito.
Yes.
Commission Members Askey.
I was not present, I'll abstain.
DeLapp.
Yes.
Jafarian.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now move on to three, business item 3A, and I believe that's yours, Alma.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Agenda Item 3A is Site Plan 2019-08. And this is a request for approval on accessory building use permit to allow a 580-square-foot animal, animal keeping shelter that is part of, actually part of a deck. It will be sit below a deck that's being proposed, as being shown on your site plan, although the shelter is part of this 1,624-square-foot deck. Only the animal keeping shelter would be required, will require approval of the Planning Commission, basically because it's creating a structure with a roof over it. The deck part of it is basically, in essence, flat work, so to speak. Anyways, the site that's, the project site is an irregular-shaped parcel consisting of approximately 20,599, 559 square feet. The, at the rear of the property, at a lower elevation, there is a recorded PACA. This property is at 1,490 Andalusian Drive, and it's located within the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan. All the properties in this specific plan have a recorded PACA. The PACA, like I said, it's a split-level pad, so the house sits higher, and then the PACA sits at a lower elevation. The property is developed with a 5,237-square-foot two-story home, an attached garage, and there are no other accessory buildings on the property, other than possibly a small palapa. The, let's see. As I indicated, this approval by the Planning Commission is for an accessory building use permit for a 580-square-foot animal keeping shelter. It was analyzed per the accessory building ordinance in reference to, let's see, animal keeping shelters for large animals. And that includes horses, sheep, or ponies, et cetera. As far as analysis of the proposal, it is a use that's allowed, being that a portion of it is in the PACA, approximately, let's see here. Approximately 324 square feet of that animal keeping shelter is in the PACA, to cover 14% of the PACA. A maximum of 40% of the PACA is allowed to be covered with animal keeping structures. So in analysis of the project, as far as the land use, it is a land use that's allowed, and allowed in the PACA. Doesn't exceed the maximum height, or the allowed size. The maximum coverage is not exceeded for the entire property and the PACA itself. Because there is a recorded PACA on the property, the graduated setback requirement doesn't apply, however, they have to be at least a minimum of five feet from side of, side of rear property lines. No washrooms are proposed. The intended shelter is proposed to be covered with the end portion of, of the deck, and proposed to be enclosed with like pipe roll fencing. Nothing that's solid or anything, just pipe roll fencing to create some enclosures under, under this deck area. Let's see. Less than six cubic yards of soil will be moved. The drainage will basically remain the same as existing. And as far as, what I did pass out is just a different view of, kind of a panned-out version of the aerial. And I, and then I just kind of drew a really small, some sticks in there to kind of represent, you know, a real rough indication of where that structure will end up being. A resolution of approval has been attached to your staff report, should the Planning Commission determine to approve the project, and let's see. That's basically it. And I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions that the, that the Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Danny, questions of staff?
No.
Janet?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Phil?
Yeah, Alma, so when I look at the plot plan, the first sheet of the major ones, up in the corner it says scope of work, and it says construct a 58-by-28 composite earth-colored deck, which I understand what that is. But it says attach to a 10-by-58 animal shelter, raised. But I don't see anything in the conditions that requires that both be built at the same time.
We can do that. We can add it, absolutely, absolutely.
Mark, questions of staff? No, okay. Do we have any comments on this one, Lacy?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Then we'll just bring it back to us, discussion and/or anything else?
I don't have any comments.
Do you have any comments?
No.
A motion perhaps?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Site Plan 2019-08, with the modification that the animal keeping area needs to be, or the associated elements that are represented on the plot plan, would, would be the same.
Be built at the same time.
Correct.
Second.
All right.
Roll call, Lacy?
I missed the second. Oh, thank you. I have a motion from Member Jafarian, and a second from Member Askey. Sorry. Chair Hedges.
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito. Commission Members DeLapp.
Yes.
Jafarian.
Yes.
Askey.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 3B. I think this is yours too, Alma.
Yes, that is mine. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Agenda Item 3B is Site Plan 2019-20. And this is for a request for approval of an accessory building use permit to allow a 2,391-square-foot large animal keeping stable, two structures, each being 2,391 square feet. This, these accessory buildings have been analyzed according to large animal shelters. And one of the things that, this construction did commence without permit, so this is the first step towards compliance, to get this going and to get it into compliance. Let's see, the project site is approximately 50,400 square feet, developed with a single-family home and an attached garage, and, you know, several detached structures, some of which will be demolished, as noted on your site plan. The other, what is, as I indicated, what's being proposed is two, 2,391-square-foot large animal keeping stables. Basically, what it consists of is, the stables altogether comprise 1,510 square feet, and they have a roof overhang of approximately 881 square feet roof overhang. And that's where you get the total of 2,391 square feet for each one. The, the stables are proposed to consist of galvanized black steel framing, wood walls, and galvanized steel roof coverings. And I did include a picture in your, in your packet, as far as what they look like. Let's see. And that was in Exhibit C. And these buildings are proposed at the very, at the very rear of, of the property. As far as in analysis of these buildings, they were analyzed according to animal keeping shelters for large animals. They meet, as far as the land use, yes, the land use is, animal keeping shelter is allowed in the A1 zone. The maximum height is not exceeded, maximum height, no more than 18 feet. The more, and the, the walls are at eight feet. And to, to the highest point of the roof overhang is approximately 10 feet 3 inches. And again, does not exceed the maximum height limit of 18 feet. The maximum size is not exceeded. Because 14 animal units are allowed on the property, the way the code is written for accessory building ordinance is that it's based on the number of animal units. So it's basically 225, which is the number that is per our municipal code, times the number of animal keeping, animal, large animals that are allowed on the property. So 14 times 225 equals 3,150 square feet. That's what would be allowed in terms of the size of the structure, but that's not exceeded, so it meets the requirement. The maximum lot coverage is not exceeded. Maximum lot coverage is 40% of the flat pad area, and that's not exceeded. Lot coverage is being proposed at approximately 19%. The graduated setback would apply with a height, a wall height of, of eight feet, the minimum setback would be five feet, and that's being adhered to. And at 10-foot, 3 inches, the minimum setback at that height of the roof would be eight, almost eight and a half feet, and that's also exceeded, met and exceeded. No washroom is being proposed. The wall articulation is per the municipal code. However, I'd like to point out that these are animal keeping shelters. They are open on, on all sides, except for the rear. So the way the code is written says, "Any side of the building that exceeds 20 feet in length shall be required to include doors and no windows for function." If you notice on the elevations, there's not an opening in the back. And the purpose is, is because there's plenty of openings all the way around, except for the back. So the Commission will have to determine whether the function, or the intent of requiring an opening in the back is necessary as a function, or whether it can be approved as, as designed. Interior walls, the only separating walls is again for the stalls and for the manure bins that are shown on the floor plan. Let's see. The, the required open animal keeping area is provided, right before the structures that are shown on your site plan. As far as the open animal keeping area, in addition to the five-foot-wide buffer, is also provided. And the architecture for this project was provided to the Architecture Review Board. The Architecture Review Board did not have comments on the architecture, however, I did get a concern expressing over when manure is collected, whatever vehicles is used to collect the manure will have to cross over the animal keeping area. So that's something that the Commission will have to determine, to discuss, or make recommendations as appropriate, or changes. This property owners within the 300-foot radius were notified as required in the accessory building ordinance, and I did get, yes, a letter from Esther Conway, and it was provided to you. It, do I need to read it, please? Was provided, as a neighbor, 22357 to Meskell. And the fact that the structure is already standing, which we're working on as far as it being already there and getting it permitted, I have no objection, as long as it is maintained in cleanliness and does not exceed the number of horses allowed, so. And that was the only thing that we got. A resolution for approval has been provided, has been attached. And I will conclude my presentation, answer any questions. I believe the applicant is in the audience, too. And I will conclude, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Alma. Questions of staff, we'll start now, Mark?
The concern about the number of horses allowed, what, do we know? What, does it say in here what the allowance, allowable number is?
Yes.
I missed it.
Yeah, it's in, in the staff report, maximum of 14 animal units is allowed on that property by ride, given the size.
Okay, and is that, are they within that? Do we know?
I believe so.
And the other question I had related to the...
Push your mic over.
Sorry, the other question I had related to those rear windows. I, I don't, I'm assuming the unit that's constructed, as constructed, is standard for horses? They don't typically put their rear window in there? Is that correct? Okay, all right, those are my only questions, thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
So I'm, I'm looking at the aerial photograph, and then I'm looking at the site plan. And I'm, I'm, I see where the existing property line is. And I'm struggling to see the 15-foot pathway to the, I believe, I believe the standard is, we've got to have 15-foot pathway to the animal area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second thing is, I can't see how in the world you can get a feed truck or anything back there without crossing over the animal area. Did you already discuss that with the applicant?
Yeah, I did express the concern that came from, we expressed, I expressed a concern that came as far as crossing the animal keeping area to pick up manure, which is basically the same thing as getting feed back there.
Right. Okay, and then on the site plan, when I'm looking at the Exhibit C, the photograph, it looks like there's two retention areas that are retaining something that are within the boundaries of what we are now calling the animal keeping area. Do you see what I'm, can you see what I'm seeing? It looks like two block wall areas that are retaining soil or manure or something there. I don't see anything that indicates that they're on the plan, or that they are to be removed.
Okay, we can definitely add it, if that's...
Okay, and then I didn't see a condition, although it's indicated on the plan, that there's a corral to be removed. I, I don't know if it's necessary or not to be, but it does say existing corral to be removed on the plan. Is that a condition?
No, well, not, not, not specifically, however. The very first condition shows Exhibit C as a record that shows that it needs to be removed, so. But we can add it, or, you know, it just defaults automatically to the first condition. It says it's based, approval is based on Exhibit E.
Okay.
So whichever the Commission desires.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Janet, questions of staff?
Well, I'm looking at the structure itself, and it shows manure storage enclosed. Is, and again, we bring up the point of having, to bring heavy equipment across where the animals are to get to the removal of manure. So that might need to be moved to a safer location.
So, but what could, there's, there's, they have multiple enough, it's a, it's a big piece of property. So there's a couple of things that can happen. I mean, when, when, the way the municipal talks about the animal keeping area, when it's a lot that I believe is larger than an acre, it could be, actually be in two separate areas. So based on the, the size of, of this lot, they can actually make it this way and wider to accommodate at least a 15-foot access on maybe on one side or the other. I mean, the property is large enough to accommodate that, so I don't know. Maybe that's something that could the Commission consider to accommodate that, that concern, which is valid, absolutely.
Right, right. I mean, if they could, you know, somehow redesign where the animal keeping area is, and have access, it's safe, I would prefer that.
Yeah, and that's something that can be a condition of approval. I can work with the applicant on that part, because it is a large property. And it can actually be in two separate areas, given, given the size of at least an acre of the lot.
Danny, questions of staff?
No, I've been answered on some of them.
Okay. I don't either. Lacy, do we have any, any, I know the applicant's here, but do we have any comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak? I'll open the public meeting, come up, please.
Hello.
Hello.
So about the concern about the, how to get to the manure, and how am I gonna get a feed truck? For the most part, we all have stallions, so they do stay in their corrals almost 100% of the time. When they do come out, is under supervision at all times. It's very rare that they're out without any kind of supervision. So normally, we're, somebody's always there to either handle them, or to make sure that everything gets taken care of as manure clean, picking up and all that sort of things. So for the most part, like I said, we haven't had any issues with my animals being on the way for trucks to get back there, tractors, and that's pretty much...
Hang on a second, do, do we have any questions? Mark, you have any questions for him? Phil?
No, I just want to make it clear to you that, that when we're doing this, we're not doing it because you're the user. I mean, I realize you own the property, but at some point, you're not gonna own the property again, right? Somebody will get it, and we just need to maintain it. Do you have any, any objection to us changing the configuration of the animal keeping area, such that there's a clear, a clear, non-obstructed access where you don't have to go across the animal keeping area?
Uh, no.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, bring it back to us, discussion and/or approval.
Just real quick, and it's a really question. The, do we need to specify that no vehicle, do we need to make a condition that no vehicle traffic can go across the animal keeping area? Isn't that part of our code already?
It would have to be a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be a condition.
Okay, then I'm gonna suggest that we add a condition, 15, that no vehicular traffic across the animal keeping area will be allowed.
So does that mean that it will have to be rearranged?
Yeah, it'll have to be rearranged. It looks like, it looks like, I mean, to Alma's point, it looks like there's plenty of space there. I mean, to move it 15 feet inboard and, and move it over a bit, doesn't look like, I mean, even if you moved it over 30 feet, looking at what he's got, I don't think it's gonna be a problem for what he's doing. So I think that's fine. So is the condition no vehicular traffic through the animal keeping area, or is the condition, the addition of these designated throughway for the vehicular traffic? Or both?
It's actually just that no vehicular traffic. So if a future, if a future owner came on board, and we've had this a couple of different times, but if a future owner came on board, and they decided that in what currently is a barn, they decided that's where they wanted to park an RV, that they wouldn't be permitted to be able to drive through the animal keeping area to get to it. That's fundamentally it, right? So really, all we want to do is just have a designated 15-foot driveline that takes you back to the animal keeping area, past the animal keeping area? So maybe that's the modification, thanks, Mark. That may be the modification, is, is just a dedicated 15-foot pathway, or driveway, per, per our code.
That's Danny?
No.
Okay, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Site Plan 2019-20 with the modification.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian, and a second from Vice Chair Azavito. Chair Hedges.
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito.
Yes.
Commission Members Askey.
Yes.
DeLapp. Jafarian.
Yes.
Motion passed with condition.
Thank you. Gonna move on to, let's see, public hearing conditional, no, public hearing A? Yeah, 4A, I believe. For you, Alma?
Yes.
Not at all.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this Agenda Item 2020-19 is a request for approval of a temporary mobile home for the elderly at 2,590 Laston Lane, and that's located in the A1 agricultural low-density zone. The property in question is, is approximately 30,477 square feet, and is developed with a single-family home, attached garage, and some detached accessory buildings, as shown on your site plan. The, let's see. The applicant, who are the parents of the property owner, who reside on the property, are requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the temporary mobile home. The intended use is for the property owner's parents that, who are 62 and 60 years, 60 years of age. The mobile home is proposed at the rear of the property. Proposed with a floor area of no more than 900 square feet. And in addition to the mobile home, what's being requested is that the Planning Commission allow a 200-square-foot carport and a 540... allow a 200-square-foot carport and a 540-square-foot patio cover attached to the mobile home. The Planning Commission will need to determine if they can allow the attached patio and the carport in addition to the mobile home. Let's see. The mobile home, as I indicated, is proposed at the rear of the property. And as far as analysis of the project, per the Norco Municipal Code, the mobile home, the intent is to provide housing for elderly family members that need to be close to the... I know, I know. That needs to be close to their family. And the mobile home, you know, is authorized to be occupied by a family... At least one of two occupants. One has to be at least 62 years of age. And this project does meet that requirement, being that the father of the owner is 62 years of age and the mom is 60. The minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet to be allowed a temporary mobile home. This property exceeds that, being at 30,477 square feet. The mobile home must meet all the setback, lot coverage, and all that good stuff. And yes, this meets the minimum lot coverage or maximum lot coverage. It doesn't exceed the maximum lot coverage. It meets the setback requirements. The floor area, which is basically measured on the interior, cannot be more than 900, no less than 350 square feet, no more than 900. The mobile home is going to affect to the city water and sewer. Let's see. And it has to be secured on a temporary foundation, but it has to be secured to the ground. Let's see. And as far as the application did include the required conditional use permit requirements as far as the application and everything else that was laid out in your staff report, as far as what's required to be shown on the site plan per the application is also shown as far as existing buildings, the proposed building, et cetera, et cetera, that was outlined in your staff report. That was also pertinent. Requirements were also provided. Let's see, what else? As far as the findings, certain findings have to be made for the approval of a conditional use permit that were also outlined in your staff report, basically centered around the first condition, which reads the requested conditional use permit will not adversely affect the general plan or the public convenience and the general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood thereof. And we have the list of the three other conditions, which I will not read, but we can discuss if the commission desires. Let's see, what else? And in conclusion, as far as it regard, the public hearing, property owners within a 300-foot radius were notified of this item being presented before the Planning Commission. We didn't receive any letters of opposition. And to conclude, the resolution of approval has been attached. Should the commission determine to approve the project as proposed, changes can be made condition accordingly. And the way the conditions are written is so that when the mobile home is no longer occupied, no longer needed, it has to be taken out. And that actually has to be recorded on the title of the property. With that, I will conclude. Answer any questions? And yeah, that's basically it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alma. Janet, do you have questions, the staff?
Yeah, I drove by the property, and I'm just curious. Is there enough clearance to get the modular pieces through the first gate?
Sorry. These modulators are moved on in sections?
Right. It was very narrow, and there's like palm trees in the way.
And they will do what necessary to get it through, absolutely.
I was just curious.
Danny, questions, the staff?
No.
Phil?
Just real quickly, Alma, on Condition 6. You said it gets recorded in the title? The idea that we... Or the concept that it's got to be removed?
Yeah.
Didn't we used to ask for like a bond or something that just... Did we get rid of that?
No, no, we did not.
Okay. So it's just recorded in title is the only thing that we have to do?
Yeah, that way when... Basically, what happens when the property goes for sale, it clouds the title and it can't do anything until it's taken care of.
Got it. Thank you. That's all I need.
Mark, any questions?
Yes, a couple of them. Alma, the... It looks like on Exhibit C, if I'm picking this area up, that wherever... Whatever that horse track is in the back is the area they're talking about putting the mobile home? Modular home?
You're talking about the aerial, correct?
Yeah. So I'm looking at the aerial in Exhibit C versus the...
Yes. That is just... It's a... Yeah, it's not a roof structure. It's basically an area that they've shown for...
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not part of their animal keeping area? Or it is?
That's part of their... Let's see. Hold on a second. Yes, a portion of their animal keeping area.
But they still have enough remaining?
They do have... Let's see. They do that large structure is a stall. And as far as the... Let me just backtrack a little. With the approval of a conditional use for a temporary mobile, because it's temporary, per municipal code, they don't... They're not required to show the open animal keeping area as a permanent structure for an accessory building. So that's been basically that...
All right. And I noticed the modular home has to be on a temporary foundation.
Correct.
What about the carport? I would assume when the modular home comes out, the carport has to come out.
That is correct.
Does it... So do we need to... Is there something we need to state in there? Or is it stated in there?
We can put it as a condition of approval, absolutely, to make it clear. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That all, Mark?
That's all.
Thank you. Alma, I did have a question. Can you tell me how many animal units are allowed there? Because I didn't see that, and I understand what you're saying about the temporary.
Yeah. Let's see. Based on the square footage, they would be allowed, let's see, 25... They would be allowed six.
Okay. And...
Six.
Will they have room for that if the building's back there still?
I believe so.
Because, I mean, this horse corral is like 1,260 square feet. That's it. And then other than that, you have a lawn.
Yeah, that's a huge... It's a thousand... What is it? A thousand?
1,260 is what I did.
Yeah. And, you know, you will have some room, and you have a hay storage.
Yeah, I'm just kind of concerned that they're taking up the whole thing, and these things can stay, of course, and then somebody else moving in. Where are you going to put your seven horses? On your lawn? Lawn ornaments, like I have now anyways.
In front of the house.
That's true. I mean, there is a lawn area. I mean, they have the corral that you can have your horses.
Nobody puts horses on their lawn.
No, I understand.
Unless they escape like mine did today on my lawn. Okay, thank you. Did we have any... Sorry, any?
I have no comments.
Okay. And is the applicant here? Okay, would you like to come up and speak? Come on up. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Alma.
No, no problem.
So what questions do you have about the...
Well, just tell us about who's moving in there. And do you have animals and that kind of thing?
Yeah, so it's my mom and dad. My dad's 62. And right now, we don't have any animals, but I know, I understand there are rules to having space for them. We have, I guess it's called a stable down towards the... I'm sorry, I'm kind of new to Norco. You go towards the top of the property, and the previous owner had an area where she kept the hay. And then there's nothing past that for animals. So it's... I know, from what I understand, the mobile home was supposed to be closer to the back of the home and the animals behind it, but because it was already a structure there, Alma said that we would be reversing it.
Okay. I see what you're saying. So you think there'd be more space behind it than where it is now?
Mm-mm.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Mark?
Is it a mobile home or a modular home? Because there's a functional difference, right?
What's the difference? Sorry.
Well, a mobile home is a basically completely prefabbed on wheels. You pull it in, park it, set it down. But a modular home comes in kind of in pieces, and you assemble it when it gets back there. I mean, there's a difference between the two types of units.
They have a... They're going through a contractor. They have like a... It's considered like, I guess, a manufactured home that they have picked out. It's two separate pieces.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know a lot about this stuff.
Okay. Okay. So it's a modular home.
Okay, sorry.
Got it. That's okay. You said mobile home, and it just...
I'm just sorry. Yeah.
I wanted to make sure I understood what it was. Did you have... Was there... There was a question earlier about whether there was enough room to get it back there?
They have somebody come and measure, and they said it would fit. Close, but it would fit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have one other question. We... In here, you discussed that it can't be bigger than 900 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, the floor area.
Okay, so even though the one that they're looking at is like 932?
Yes, because it's the floor. It's interesting because the municipal code specifically says floor area, and that's measured from the interior. So the walls will add maybe just so... It'll be just slightly bigger than, as far as the footprint. But the municipal code says floor area. So thank you, Pat. That's a good question.
Bring it back to us. Discussion?
If it's okay with the rest of the commission, I would suggest that we modify Condition 6 to also include the removal of the carport at the time. Carport, porch, patio, anything else that's associated with it, associated structures, would also be removed at the time that it's no longer functioning.
Condition 6, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's where you've got the removal of the mobile home.
Anyone else? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Conditional Use Permit 2020-09 as modified.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Member DeLapp. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Askey?
Yes.
DeLapp? Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion approved with conditions.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move to 4B. Steve finally gets to work. I know. Glad you came to work, Steve. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a proposal for the development of a convenience store, gas pumps, and car wash on the southeast corner of Fourth Street and Hamner Avenue. The project site is... So the project site is currently vacant. It used to be the Palomar Building Supply... Palomar, or whatever it was called. Paragon. And then before that, obviously, it was the bank, the famous bank robbery location. It's currently vacant. The structures have all been removed. And what they're proposing is... Not very clear, but you have a copy of the site plan that was provided with your Agenda Packet. So you'll notice that the retail convenience store is located to the back of the property, which is on the right side of this exhibit. And behind that is the car wash. And then the canopy, obviously, is in front between the building and Hamner Avenue. The project site is surrounded on all sides by CG zoning, and everything is developed with commercial uses, with the exception of directly to the east, there are non-conforming residential uses, three or four units in there. Zone commercial, but the residential uses do exist and are non-conforming. The... All of the street dedications, the right-of-way dedications and the street improvements have been provided. And the project is conditioned so that if there are any street replacements or public improvement replacements, that will be a cost to the developer. And that includes a replacement of the horse trail that's on the south side of Fourth Street that you see on this exhibit here. The... Now, the way this use is allowed in the zone, and I'll go through it a little bit later, is a gas station by itself would... You know what? I'll go through that in a minute. It's too complicated to go through right now. So it has an attached car wash, and because of that, can be approved with a conditional use permit. One of the uses and one of the requirements of this use in this zone is that if a car wash is going to be approved, it first has to have an approved noise study, which you have attached to your Agenda Packet. And the noise study concluded that the only impacts of the project are to the east, where the non-conforming uses are located. And the project is currently conditioned so that the noise levels are... Whatever attenuation measures are needed, they have to provide them to reduce the noise level to 86 dB. However, and this is something that the Planning Commission's going to have to discern tonight, is for residential uses, the goal of the city's regulations is that it be no more than 65 dB. But as the Planning Commission is aware, a non-conforming use, the intent of it and the purpose of it is that eventually it goes away, that you don't try to preserve it in perpetuity. Eventually, the non-conforming uses go away, and it gets replaced with a commercial use. And a commercial use by its nature doesn't require the same level of noise attenuation because it's more compatible with other commercial uses. So what the Planning Commission has to decide tonight is, do we provide noise attenuation to 65 dB, which will require a more substantial wall than currently exists? There's currently a six-foot wall that's identified in the noise study. However, the six feet is on the residential side. And if you look at the project side, it's probably only about four feet above grade level. So there's more room to go over that short wall to get to the residences. So that's something that the Planning Commission will have to discern if we protect those existing uses now or assume that they're going to go away eventually and leave it as conditioned to go to an 86 dB with the noise attenuation. Now, the other thing that is... It's mentioned in the noise study. If you look at the table on page two of your staff report, one of the noise impact going north up to the trail on the south side of Fourth Street... I'm not going to get into noise science because I don't understand it that well. But there's two levels that are identified in the table. The one is the maximum noise that's produced for a period of 12 minutes in an hour. And if you notice, for on the north side, the maximum level is 68.5 dB. What they do to determine sequent impact is they take that measurement and average it out over an hour for a people impact, which brings it down to less than 65, which typically would be okay. But the... When you're talking about horses, as we've discussed many times before, it's that immediate burst of noise that can be dangerous to horse riders. And so based upon that, that maximum level of 68.5 could be a concern. I discussed it with our deputy city manager and who is over the Animal Control Division. And he says that human and horses have about the same tolerance for noise, so they generally go with a 65 dB. So that's another place where the Planning Commission's going to have to decide, do you want to attenuate for that pulse noise at 68.5, which can be done with, for instance, doors that close while the car wash is operating. And that reduces... They'll have to do another follow-up traffic study to show that it will reduce that dB down or leave it the way it is and assume that the average 61.9 is acceptable. it is and, and assume that the average 61.9 is acceptable. All right. So, getting on, the, there are a number of development standards, regulation standards, that the Planning Commission needs to consider in their deliberation on this project. One of the, one of the requirements in the Norco Municipal Code is locational standards for the, is regulations for the location of approved gas stations. There are certain limitations on that, and I'll go through those right now. There's two of them that the project, on its face, doesn't meet, but it can meet it if the Planning Commission goes with one of the exceptions, which I'll go through. So, the two that they currently don't meet is that you can't have a service station on Hamner Avenue within 1,500 feet of any other service station. And then the other one that they don't meet is you can't have a service station at the intersection with the local street, and Fourth Street is a local street. So, nonetheless, there, they can, there are exceptions where they can be approved if they meet certain criteria, one of certain criteria, and that is the inclusion of an automated car wash, which they did. So, with the inclusion of the car wash, that's an exception that would allow this use to be approved at this location. Okay? If that makes sense. So, the, all of the other requirements, regulations for development in the CG zone are met. The, there are conditional use permit requirements that the Planning Commission needs to, needs to make findings on. They did provide all of the information that the Planning Commission needs to be able to approve a, a conditional use permit, if that's the decision of the Planning Commission. So then, now we get on to architecture. Okay? So, one of the requirements for architectural review is that the building architecture shall reflect a desired Western theme and identity. This is another issue, or another item, that the Planning Commission has discretion to approve or deny. The project was provided to the Architectural Review Subcommittee, and they, they were okay with the design of the building. This is the front elevation that faces towards Hamner Avenue. This is the side elevation that faces towards Fourth Street. And this is the elevations of the proposed canopy over the fuel pumps. That would be between the convenience store and Hamner Avenue. The, there is a whole list of regulations that I won't go through that a, a building needs to meet in order to be able to meet the Western definition. And these, these buildings do meet those criteria. There's a list of materials that are recommended for use, and they, they are using those materials. There are also a list of materials that are prohibited, and they're not proposing any of those materials. And same with colors. They're using the, the recommended colors, and they're, they're not proposing any of the colors that are prohibited or not recommended. And then part of the analysis is the information that's provided on the application form itself. There were two items that staff identified that could be of issue to the Planning Commission. One is a change in scenic views or vistas from existing residential areas or public lands. This is another discretionary item for the Planning Commission to, to look at. The application identified that as a no. But, that, you know, that is up to the determination of the Planning Commission. And then the other one is a change in pattern, scale, or character of the general area of the project. Also identified as a no in the application, but that's a, a matter for determination by the Planning Commission. The proposed use meets all of the zoning requirements. And then, for getting back to the conditional use permit, there are, there are certain findings that the Planning Commission needs to make in order to approve the project. The first finding is the requested CUP will not adversely affect the general plan or public convenience. And again, this is a determination by the Planning Commission that the use meets the intent of the zone, which is to allow retail and commercial uses that are centered around retail, eating, and drinking establishments, and entertainment to serve the needs of the community. For finding two, that the use will not adversely affect adjoining land uses, the project itself is exempt from SEQA, but did provide a noise study, as is required by the code for this type of use. And we've discussed what the potential impacts of the noise are, and those would have to be at the discretion of the Planning Commission if you determined to mitigate those noise impacts differently. The third is the size and shape of the site are adequate for the proposed use. Again, that's part of the, the discernment of the Planning Commission, if it determines to approve the project. And that the traffic generated, generated by the proposed use will not impose an undue burden on the streets and highways in the area. Again, the project is exempt from SEQA. And generally, if a project meets the zoning requirement, the city's circulation element is designed to accommodate build-out of the land use plan of the city. So, the, the traffic impact should not be excessively impacted by the project. Now, one of the, one of the important things to point out is, from the Norco Municipal Code, the Planning Commission has discretion to approve, change, or deny a conditional use permit. So, you can, and you often do that by changing conditions and that sort of thing. But, you can approve it, or you can deny it. So, you have those option, options before you. The project was reviewed a project review board, and all of the comments have been incorporated into the project. That's before you tonight, or are part of the conditions of approval. I already talked about SEQA. And then the last thing, there's additional items that don't normally come up for review, but we want to talk about it because of where the project is located and, and cited being adjacent to the horse trail on Fourth Street. Similar to other projects in commercial zones that have trails beside them, like on Sixth Street and down at the Norco Village Square at Coridonan River. When that situation exists, we, we condition projects to provide a, a corral area. And so, this project has been conditioned to provide a corral area that would be approved at staff level. And then, in addition to that, I kind of brief, briefly talked about it in the beginning, given the historical events that have happened at that site with, when it was a bank building and, and the bank robbery that occurred, a condition has been added that a monument for approval by the Planning Commission be provided, and that would have to be approved and installed before any building permits are issued. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. We'll start with you, Danny. Questions of Steve?
Noise factor, I know you brought it in about the entrance and exiting of the, of that. It happened to be where we're eating at, at the newest one down there, on Hamner, they're the newest one. We were eating at the derby room across the street. And man, when that fan came on, you could hear it all the way from there. It startled you. And, and my biggest concern is the horse trail. And when those fans come at one end, both ends would be the same. It was amazing. We were wondering how, you know, that horses wouldn't be startled when all of a sudden they would kick on. And it really made a change after seeing this and knowing that. And that's just recently, that, it was pretty noisy. I mean, it would startle a horse if they were on the trailer.
And the noise study, as I indicated, does mention that some attenuation measures can include the installation of doors on both the entry and the exit, so that while it's operating, the car wash itself, those doors are closed.
Yeah, I think that would help, because I'll tell you, it really was. Because you're close enough, and for a horse, getting blindsided by the noise, they would jump.
Right.
You know, on that part of it. And, the building itself looks nice, and everything looks nice, but I'll be honest with you, I don't really care about having another gas station. We have enough of them within the distances in this small town. The design looks nice. Everything else looks real great on it. But, I just think we're overloaded already with gas stations.
Janet?
Um, yeah, I agree. As you noted here, with exceptions, but we already have a gas station just down the street with a, oh, I'm sorry. We already have a gas station down the street with a car wash.
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Sure.
Remember, this is the questions of staff time, as opposed to the expressing your opinion about the project time.
Oh, okay.
We have, we, we have a public hearing, and we have comments and all kinds of fun stuff. So, it's just questions.
I was pushing it, I knew I was.
Actually, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm considering, John, I'm considering you staff. So, questions of staff. Have you reviewed this letter that came from Mr. Cedrick's attorney?
Wendy Bengi, yes.
Okay. So, you've reviewed the letter. Do you see any conflicts in, between what she's saying and what we're presenting today? Because it sounds like from Steve, we've addressed their concerns in terms of conditions.
No, Miss Bengi represented Mr. Cedrick in litigation.
Mike?
It is on.
Get closer, please.
She represented Mr. Cedrick in litigation with the city several years ago unsuccessfully.
Okay.
The basis upon which Mr. Cedrick's proposed station was not approved is not, as she suggests here, simply that it was close to Hamner Avenue. It was the fact that the lot was too small to put the things that he wanted to put.
I recall it. I, I just want to make sure that you had reviewed the letter, and that there wasn't anything you thought ought to be brought to our attention. Okay. And then, Steve, I'm holding you accountable. Can you please look at page three?
Oh, you know what? There, there are two mistakes in there.
Yes.
Locational mistakes.
Okay. So, I just want to make a clarification.
I said Hamner and Town and Country from cut and paste, then it should be Hamner and Fourth Street. I apologize.
Very good.
Page one, under property description also.
While I have the floor, can I indicate that there were a number of opposition letters, which you've received copies of?
And the applicant is in the audience, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Mark, questions of staff?
Yes, hi, Steve. Two questions. Does the, do we know, do they intend to operate the car wash 24/7?
You know what? I would ask the applicant. The, the noise study assumed it would not be 24/7.
Right.
And that the, so that the, there would not be any nighttime impacts, and they don't really get a big demand for car washes in the middle of the night. But, I would defer that to the applicant.
Okay. And then the other question was about, do you know, I think that the mention of the, the kick on the fans was the blowers, the dryers at the end of the car wash, right? That's the thing that kicks on real loud. Typically, that's at the end, and the door, the car wash part is done, and the doors open up, and then you drive through the blower on the way out. So, that, that, do we know that the door on the end would stay down while the blowers are running, or would the door be, be up when the blowers are running?
Yeah, I would, again, I don't design car washes, but I'm assuming that if the door has to be closed while it's in operation, they'll just extend the length of the car wash, so that as you're driving through, those fans get done before the door opens.
Okay. That's all.
My question is, have we had this before, where we have a noise study done when you don't know what the equipment is going to make noise?
Yes. And that's why there's a follow-up.
Okay. I just found that funny, that they don't know what's going in there, but they're, they have a noise study on it.
Yeah.
We have done this before.
The follow-up noise study is going to have to give the manufacturing specs from the manufacturer, and what they recommend to get to whatever dB the Planning Commission approves.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve. If we have no more questions, we'll ask the applicant to come up.
I will, in a minute. I'm waiting for Steve to leave. We'll open the public hearing now, please. Got you, this time, didn't I?
Hello?
Hi, Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity for me to take off my mask.
Your name, please.
This is, I'm Doug with Tate Associates. And my associate, the real estate broker, Michelle, is back here with the red mask. And I'd like to thank you for working with your staff. They've been really diligent and responsive. And the reason why I had to talk to your planning director is our noise consultant is not here tonight. He's watching it, and he's sending me messages. So, I had to make sure Steve was reading it to make sure that he and I are on the same page, because there's a little difference there. We agree with the conditions that you guys have for approval. However, I have just a couple of comments. If you guys had concerns regarding that, those residences that are adjacent to that car wash, that it was mentioned that the wall, as seen from that level of the, of the grade of the property, is at four feet. If you guys wanted to add two feet, which is kind of the standard to have a six-foot-high wall, so we're actually, the wall on our side is actually six-foot-high, as opposed to four-feet-high, we're fine with that. But then, that creates the issue that, as seen from the residential, it's an eight-foot-high wall. So, I don't know if that's an issue with staff, but I think that would probably help you guys in your determination. Another thing regarding car washes that they're having is people saying, oh, put doors on, is, and this is a national issue, is that homeless are going in there at night, and because there's no, actually have better security with no door, because even when the police drive by or the public drives by, it's open and it has the lighting, and it's actually secured. When the doors come down, or you have the plastic curtains, you get a lot more like vandalism, and people living in there at nighttime. The other item that we are okay with is regarding the criteria for a monument, to show respect for what happened there, the tragedy. And then, based on what's been happening the past several months, and it could last for a while longer, I was wondering, like, are you guys considering, like, a statue? Because we don't want to be in a situation where we're always maintaining the statue, or it gets torn down. So, I was thinking, like, a plaque on a nice big rock, and the planning director agreed that we're kind of, we're narcissistic, so. But, he said that we could work with other staff here, and even the police department, of what they want. So, we will do that. But, that was one issue. That was an issue of, like, well, that could be ongoing maintenance issue. Other than that, in concurrence with everything, and appreciate your time.
Can you hold up for a minute and see if anybody has any questions? Mark, would you have any questions?
There's already a 7-Eleven at Second and Hamner. Is that, that one relocating here, or is this going to be in addition to that?
This will be in addition to it. In addition.
Okay. Just curious.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, there was a question earlier about the operating hours of the car wash.
It's not open during the night, for obvious reasons, like, you know, nighttime, like, you don't have the ambient noise. And so, if the car wash were open, you could hear everything, but unless, there's no market, no one shows up to wash their car, like, after, after, usually during the...
So, just in, in your opinion, and I understand that you, you're more of an expert than I am, but if the car wash during operating hours had closing doors to limit the noise, but in non-operating hours, the doors were left open, so that police could drive by and see inside and make sure that there wasn't homeless, or, you know, vagrancy or vandalism, would that be acceptable?
Yes. And if, we're fine with you limiting the hours, too. This would be the opportunity, you're like, from seven to seven.
I don't know what limits we've put on the other ones. It's generally economically-driven.
Right.
Whereas to your point, I, I can't remember the last time I saw somebody go at two in the morning to go get their car washed.
Yeah, it's, it's market-driven. It's just common sense. No one gets their car washed at that time.
Got it. That was, that was the only, that was the only question.
Even though my wife says I don't have it.
Janet, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay.
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Lacey, we have some comments you're going to read to us.
I do not.
Oh, you do not. Just what's on the paper in front of us.
Everything that you received via email will be in the records, but I'm not reading it into the record.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for us for discussion. Discussion?
I'm going to start right here on discussion, just because, because we've done this before. The, the one letter that was about the oversaturation or overconcentration of liquor licenses, we've had this before. The ABC is the governing agency on that. Despite the times where we've said it seemed like an oversaturation, ABC can come by and say, no, it seems okay. And we get overruled, and because of the nature of the organization, it doesn't change. So, I appreciate the letter from the, or the email from Ron Rieger, but frankly, I don't know that we have a whole lot on that. Secondarily, 7-Eleven, I think we've got the one at So I appreciate the letter from, or the email from Ron Rieger. But frankly, I don't know that we have a whole lot on that. Secondarily, 7-Eleven, I think we've got the one at Second and Hamner. We've got one over at, is it Second and River? We've got, I mean, like, I don't even know how many 7-Elevens we've got. But if I did the same thing with Arco and McDonald's, we got, I think we got a bunch of those. Starbucks, we probably got even more than that, I don't even know. So some of the comments that were here, I just thought it'd be worth having a bit of discussion if anybody's got a concern about them. I don't in particular have a concern about those, the issues that are identified in this other letter.
Mark?
A couple of things. While I recognize that, you know, when you have residential units in a commercial area, you don't expect them to stay long as those men, or you expect them to eventually transition out. I think there's a difference between expecting them to transition out and driving them out with excessive noise. I think we have to be very conscious of that and very considerate of the fact that those are residential units. And we'd have to have whatever noise abatement was necessary, in my opinion, if we allowed this to go forward. But I also agree, we've got a lot of gas stations. I don't know what the point is of, and particularly if the information in these documents is true that the gas stations are seeing reduced revenues and reduced traffic, which I imagine they are with COVID, but I don't know what the, what the long-term impacts will be. Adding another gas station just dilutes the market. So I don't know that we have the need for it, but just my, my opinion.
Jenny?
I agree with you. It's a, it's a nice project, it's a very nice project. But that's my concern, there's like too many.
Jenny?
Yeah, as I was saying before, I just think we're oversaturated already for such a small town coming down Hamner. We have a lot of car washes, we have two car washes down. Besides, it's not with the gas stations. Gas stations themselves, we've got plenty now. I think we've got more than enough going down Hamner. It's just how I feel. It's a small town, it's not a big town. And with the freeway getting the express lanes, you're going to see less traffic coming down Hamner. Before, we were pulling traffic because of the traffic, you know. But now when the express lane coming up on the freeway on the 15, you're going to see people flying through here. And that, we're going to have reduced traffic probably because of that reason. So I really don't think we should saturate it with another gas station.
I agree with everybody. I was here and Phil was here too when the other little gas station tried to remodel itself. And I know it was small. But it, one of the things that they said at that time was it was too close to another gas station, so you can't do that. That seems a little unfair now we can do it. We just had, we just approved one and it's all built and it's beautiful, right down the street. You know, a service station, a car wash, a Auntie M's pretzel place. It just seems, I'm with you, it seems like we even, even we have somebody from, I think it was Economic Development, here saying that we need, we need different types of businesses on Hamner. And I know you can't pick and choose because we're not a big town. But we ought to leave some of the nice corners available for originally what we wanted was a steakhouse and that didn't end up happening. But I think we, I think we're oversaturated.
So I'm just going to share a little bit on the, just in, and I'm not, it's not a rebuttal, just additional information. The people that I work for evaluated that lot. And it's impossible to build anything there and comply with car park, with a car park, what you've got to do for parking. They were looking at shuttling people, they were looking at trying to get parking across the street. The likelihood of it turning into much more than this is pretty slim. So what we're really doing is probably putting it into a condition where somebody's going to have to buy that adjacent, the lot right behind it or buy the Cowgirl Cafe in order to make it feasible to put it on that piece of property. We got plenty of empty pieces of property that don't have anything on it.
Yeah.
And so in this particular case, under the assumption that this is a reputable organization, that there was a point in their, you know, they had to go ahead and put together a pro forma and decide that this was going to be a worthwhile thing to do. We also, we have a lot of gas stations. But if you went the other direction from Silver Lakes, there's, we're the closest gas stations. So if you want to hit a gas station pretty quick, like, there's still a line at the Arco. I don't even understand that, we.
Yeah, but you could probably hit 12 of them before you even got to this project coming from Silver Lakes.
Which is reasonable. But I'm getting, I'm, I mean, I would just suggest that, given the different stuff that we've looked at on this lot, on this lot, there's not going to be a gambling house, there's not going to be, because we've already got the Derby, right? There's not going to be a steakhouse, there's not, because you can't make, you can't make any of it park correctly.
But, but it did work with the steakhouse.
It, it actually didn't. We gave them a break.
Yeah, but I mean, that doesn't mean you can't give another company a break.
Potentially, I just would tell you that in my experience, customer service really is crap if you can't find a parking spot. So those are my opinions. I don't have anything else to comment.
Any other discussion and/or motions?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve conditional use permit 2019-10 with a modification that the wall between the non-complying residential goes to six-foot and that we probably need to add a condition regarding light, the lighting. We want to have safety lighting, but we don't want it to be invasive into that adjacent property. And that's my motion.
Point of clarification on that is, do we have to address also the sound for the horse trail?
After the doors.
The doors.
I'll go ahead and modify my, my motion to include a condition that during operating hours, there are doors on the car wash lanes themselves.
Any second? Guys, for lack of a second, anyone else want to make a motion? We need some kind of motion. I can make a motion if you want, that we deny resolution 2019-10 and resolution 2020-29. We have to make a decision.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Chair Hedges and a second from Vice Chair Azavito to deny. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission members Askey?
Yes.
Dilap?
Yes.
Jafarian?
No, and, and under discussion, I would like the minutes to reflect the modifications so that when this is appealed to City Council, that those modifications that we included be included in whatever goes before the City Council.
Yes, sir. Motion denied.
Motion.
The motion was approved.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My apologies.
Okay, we'll go to 4C, and I think this is yours, Steve, also?
Excuse me, I'm going to have to abstain myself.
Again? Oh, yeah.
Oh, waiting for the overhead. I'll go ahead and start. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. You'll recall that this project, the Palomino Business Park, was approved by the City Council on June 17th after a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. There was a whole series of entitlements, I won't list them all, but they all got approved. What's being proposed now is, is a development agreement between Caprock Partners and the city to control development of the actual Palomino Business Park. And let's see if I can do this, it's shaking all over the place.
You can do it, you can do it, Steve.
That's true. Okay, yeah, okay. So the project was approved in four phases. The first phase is Phase One, which is the right half of the rectangle that's formed by Mountain, Pacific, First and Second. Phase Two is this over here, with the exception of the commercial, which is Phase Four. And then Phase Three is on the east side of Mountain Avenue where we currently have the housing development overlay zone. And that will be determined by how arena numbers come out in October, whether that housing development overlay zone can go away. So right now, what's been approved are the first two phases. And you'll recall that the project was approved so that all of the public improvements, both the, both the responsibility of the developer and the public improvements on the other sides of the streets would get done together all in Phase One. And I'll go through the specifics of how that's going to work. The, we call it complete streets. And that means that while the project developer is responsible for street improvements on their side of the street, they're also going to do street improvements on the other side of the street so that when everything's done, Olive Pacific Avenue will be a brand-new street, side to side, including a horse trail on the side of the project. Olive Second Street, where the right-of-way exists, and most of it exists, with the exception of this small area right here, those existing residences. The right-of-way does not exist, but street improvements nonetheless will be squeezed in there so that they can complete the streets. Again, trail on that side of the street, on the south side. But they will do improvements on the north side where the right-of-way already does exist. And so they will provide the street improvements. And everywhere where they're providing improvements for the city, which basically is not their responsibility, they're going to be reimbursed for those, for those costs later. And then on Mountain Avenue, the west side of the street is what fronts the project site. And they are responsible for street improvements on that side, plus the trail. And then they own most of the properties on the east side of Mountain Avenue, so therefore they will be providing those improvements as well. And these are all in Phase One, which is, again, that right side of the rectangle. And then on First Street, the project side, they are responsible for street improvements again, including a trail. And then on the south side, there is a detention base and that's part of Phase One. And they will be responsible for street improvements there as well. And then where the right-of-way exists, where they don't own the property, which most of the street is. So this is kind of a general overview of the public improvements. And then I have some blow-up shots that will explain it a little bit better. So this is, going north is up towards the top of the exhibit. So on the bottom is First Street and on the, on the left is Pacific Avenue and on the right is Mountain Avenue. So the, the hashed area is what typically would be the city's responsibility. And that would, if it was left up to that normal process, it would have to await its turn on the CIP list, which could be, you know, could be decades. And the, so with this development agreement, the developer will be doing both the green hashed areas and then the brown areas, which is their responsibility. And then they will be reimbursed for the cost of the city, or the public improvements on the city's side of the street. And then, and so the next exhibit actually is up by Second Street. Again, north is going towards the top. And same situation, the west side of Pacific, right-of-way exists and they will provide the street improvements and be reimbursed for those costs. On Second Street, with the exception of that one small area that I talked about here, the, they will provide the street improvements on that side and also on the north side where the right-of-way already exists. And then on Mountain Avenue, they're, they pretty much will be doing all of the street improvements where they have ownership of the property and can dedicate the right-of-way. For the few parcels that they do not own the right-of-way, they will, again, put in street improvements. They'll have to squeeze them in because you won't get the full curb and, curb and, well, full street improvements. So in addition to the street improvements, they are also going to put in signals. The two signals at Second Street and Mountain Avenue and First Street and Mountain Avenue, they have some share in the cost of those and therefore will be required to pay their portion of that cost. And what's, what is, correct me if I'm wrong, but the part that's the, from cumulative development within the city and the, and the regional demand, the city has some shared costs in those as well. And that reimbursement will be determined later. The third signal being proposed, the red dot right in the middle of Second and First is a not, is not required as a result of the traffic study that was done. But the developer wants to put that in there because that is the primary entrance into the park. So that will be fully borne by the developer. And then there's some water. Yeah, water infrastructure. They're installing main lines in Mountain Avenue and First Street. The, they will be reimbursed for the water main in First, but they will have to bear the cost of the new water main in Mountain Avenue. And then they are responsible for all of the onsite water improvements. And then lastly, I think, okay, in addition to these improvements that I've talked about and the reimbursement for some of those improvements, the, in consideration for the approval of the project, that will obviously give benefit to them. But also to reflect the impact to the city in terms of the impact to public safety, the loss of historical resources, the developer is offering a public benefit contribution of $2 million. And then on top of that, they are proposing a contribution of $240,000. That would go towards helping to fund the Gold Star Blue Star Moms Monument, the Fallen Hero Jewish Memorial Monument, and then the Kathy Acevedo Spirit of Norco Memorial, all up at Ingalls Park. So this is being presented for recommendation to the City Council. I think I've addressed everything. But if anyone else wants to chime in, but it's being recommended for approval. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Jen, any questions of Steve?
The public water lines, what is the cost to the city for overall?
I'm going to let Chad talk about that.
Okay.
For, I'm Chad Blazin, the Director of Public Works, nice to meet you. The, the master facilities schedule that was done in 2014 identifies many infrastructure that the city identified was needed in the future, which ultimately developed our development impact fees that the developer is paying. So several of those items are listed on here that the developer is going to install, but is going to get reimbursed. So the water line that's on First Street is identified in the report as a reimbursable. And I believe that amount is up to, I think it's $565,000. I can find it here. But a part of our agreement basically will indicate that we're only paying for the construction portion of it and only up to that max. So if, for anything that costs beyond that for construction, we would not pay any of that additional burden. It would be on the developer to pay any amount above that. So any of the amounts that are stipulated in this development impact report is the maximum we would pay in the agreement that we developed. Because the developer is going to do all the engineering, whether it's for the traffic signals, which are reimbursable. And even the trail portion on Mountain is a reimbursable on there that's identified in this report. So we would only pay the maximum identified in here, none of the engineering design related to do the work. So our, we would only be paying off the actual bid items that we would review and determine before the project goes out to bid by the developer. So we knew when the costs come in, we're only going to pay those costs related to our construction and would not exceed the maximum identified in this study.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
Hey, Steve, you know what's not indicated here, and maybe you know the answer and maybe you don't, is all of these different things that are going through, including the streets and the trails and the water and the monuments. And what, is the city responsible for the 100% of the maintenance of those?
for the 100% of the maintenance of those?
Actually, the, no, the, the, let's start with the trail. I know the trail for sure. The trail's going to be installed in public right-of-way at, at cost to the developer, and then they will be responsible for establishing a, an ownership organization that will maintain the trail, that will be open for public access, but they'll maintain it. The street improvements, I think the city will maintain those.
Correct. Once the, once the improvements are done, whether it's the, the street or the signals, they're all dedicated to the city and we take over maintenance and operation.
And, and does that include the one that was indicated with the red dot that was not, wasn't indicated on the traffic report, but they're voluntarily putting it in?
Correct, because it is going to be our asset. We're responsible for it at that point. They're just putting in the physical dollars to install it.
I got it. Thank you.
Mark?
Are all of the vehicular ingress and egress points along Mountain Avenue for this?
Most of them are. I should have pointed that out. Thank you. Most of the driveways are on Mountain. There are two driveways on the north side of First. One is into the, into the business park, the other one is into the future Phase 4 commercial site. Other than that, the, the rest of them, there are no access points on Pacific and none on Second, so they'll all be on Mountain.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see here, but it's so, but we're not talking about doing any type of traffic control at that entrance point off of First?
No, not, not with a signal.
And the main reason is because it's a ride-in, ride-out only?
Right. Okay, thank you.
Did I understand you to say that there's going to be horse trails around the whole project?
Yes.
Even though it doesn't indicate the little red on the map when you had your little...
Well, the, the red on the map is because that's a reimbursable to the developer.
Okay. But they are going to be putting them on all four sides.
All four sides.
Okay, that's, thank you. Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay. Oh. Do, anybody have any questions for the developer?
No.
All right. We'll bring it back to us here. Do we have any cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I think this is pretty consistent with, I'm sorry, I've jettled right in.
No, go forward.
You know how I get.
No, no, go forward.
I'm caustic and aggressive. The, I think this is consistent with, with what we talked about before we did this. So unless there's some other discussion, I'll go ahead and make an approval, make a motion to approve the development agreement for Palomino Business Park, as stated. Recommend the City Council approve the development agreement.
I second the motion.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Member Dilap. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice, Vice Chair Azavito accused himself. Member Askey?
Yes.
Member Dilap?
Yes.
Member Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Janet, could you get Danny out of the closet, please? Wake him up.
Not good times.
Pass before you close the meeting. We're all done. I'll be back.
Have to wake you up, Danny? Danny, now. Okay, well, we actually are, do you want to go ahead first, Lacey, before we just, I don't believe we have any planning commissions or staff? You can do the staff communication, that'll be you.
Ah, okay. So I apologize, Commission, I had a public comment come in. I, I thought it was actually for a different item. I misread the email. So this is a public comment that would have been before the meeting started. It's slightly lengthy, so bear with me.
Any specific item or just...
It is not. It is a public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was for this last item.
Okay.
Dear Planning Commission, my wife and I have lived in Norco for two years now. We are both 29 years old. I grew up and went to Highland Elementary when I was younger, before my family moved to Corona. My parents still own two houses in Norco, and we now own ours. I would like to build a 1,400-square-foot large vehicle parking in the rear property of a corner lot on Second and Corona. First off, my frustrations solely rise from not being allowed to do that, to do what I want on my own piece of land that I paid for. Second, I'm even more frustrated that the City of Norco employees gave me false information when I was in escrow with my house in August of 2018. I was proactive and planned ahead for the future, but was given wrong information that made me believe there was no restrictions on this land. If I would have known about the requirements, I would have backed out of escrow. To this day, you can still go onto the Norco Planning Department's website and find the old accessory building requirements. See attached video. I will forward this email when, when we're done. Third, Norco widened Second Street for no apparent reason. There is not one benefit for having a wide road when it ends in a single-lane road. It does not solve traffic for the schools, as there is still a line from the freeway to the stop sign. It increased speeding, it increased the road width to allow the drivers to drift and do donuts at the corners. It made everyone's driveway steeper, and it has caused multiple car accidents in the two years we have lived here. On top of that, it made our specific property narrower than the 80 feet required, 80-foot required lot wide for an A1-zoned property, and has now made it physically impossible to put an accessory building on my property due to the setback requirements. Quick exercise, Google horsekeeping and click images. What do you see? Over half of the pictures will have some sort of barn or building for horses, whether it's in the backyard or they're, or they are already inside one. But yet, I did, I did not search for barns or buildings or any structure related. It is natural to see a horsekeeping area consist of large barns, but Norco does not allow them. This makes no sense. Even the typical monitor architecture, which has raised center, sorry, center for tack and feed is not allowed in Norco due to exceeding eve and overall height limits. By the actions of the building ordinance, I understand that Norco's goal is not to allow large buildings whatsoever in a residential property. The ordinance implies extreme limits that at the end of the day would result in a small building in the center of someone's backyard. And even when they figure out how to get through all the requirements, the city slaps them with a massive fee of $3,400. Your neighboring city, City of Corona, has no limit on square footage, 25-foot roof height, four-foot setbacks, 40% lot coverage, and no separate planning fee. Please consider reviewing and revising your ordinance. Thanks, Craig Bennett.
Thank you, Lacey.
I apologize.
Anything else? Anyone from the Planning Commission? All right. We'll go ahead and close the meeting. Thank you. Oh, by the way, Steve's, Steve's last time is next meeting.
Oh, man, he better have...
Do you want to bring him a, you want to bring him a present of squares, maybe?